Yes.
Alrighty. So because of the continuation of the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being held electronically over the Zoom platform. It is authorized by the county's declaration of local emergency, the county's continuity of government ordinance, this authority's resolution and Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2 subsection A3. The public has real-time audiovisual access to this meeting over Zoom and real-time audio access over telephone. Everyone on the phone and attending via Zoom from the public is in listen-only mode. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the county's website. So with that explanation, I will ask the board members to identify themselves and their general location. I'll do that by roll call. Let's see, Bucky Walsh?
I'm here at my home in Almar.
Let's see, Waldo Jaquith?
There he is. I'm here at my home in Stony Point.
Trevor Henry?
Present in the county office building, McIntyre.
Bill Fritz?
Here in my home in Charlottesville.
Supervisor Palmer?
I'm here at my home in Ivy.
And Supervisor Price?
Present and at my home in Scottsville.
Alright, Mr. Chair, we have a quorum, so we can go ahead.
Thank you very much, Richie. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. It's a technical meeting because we have all of us here, but really it's a work session to hear from the broadband affordability accessibility office or the BAO or the uh oh or you know, it would be nice if it was easier to pronounce. And so with that said, some of the normal trappings of our regular meetings are not going to be part of this session. So I don't think we need to vote on the agenda. It's to hear what these guys have to say. I don't think we need to have time for us to talk about things. I'm, you know, as, as members of the board, really, we're here for the for the broadband office and we want to hear what you guys have to say. So unless there's any objection, I'd like to just hand over the gavel to Mike and let him run with it. Is that okay? Hearing no objection? Mike?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. This is the first work session for the Almar Broadband Authority, and that's five years running. We haven't had an official work session, so it's great that we're allowing this conversation to happen with some outcomes that'll be provided during the opening slides to show the agenda with possible outcomes for this meeting. We are going to adhere to the one-hour limit on this meeting, so there will be a time near the end where we'll decide, you know, do we push things out or we do want to recap what we decided during the work session itself, but we won't go over the hour limit, so everyone can relax about this lasting until 8:00 PM or later. Here we go. So Jason Ina Fuentes joined the broadband office. We generally refer to it as the broadband office so that we don't have to say BAAO or BAO or however you want to pronounce our name. So broadband office works. We're glad to partner with the broadband authority and work together on solving some of the major issues that are happening within the county and specifically in the southern section of the county. We continue to see performance that is lacking from the telcos providing the majority of service there today. So we're hopeful to work on ways to make things better. And that's one of the main outcomes of this meeting is to understand where we are with the data collection and have some guidance and some direction provided to the broadband office from the authority. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jason. He's done a great job putting together these slides. Thanks for Trevor's input and help with getting this thing going. And we hope it turns out to be a very fruitful discussion. Looking forward to your ideas as well as your comments of what we've put together today. So Jason, I'll turn it over to you. We see your slide and we're ready to go.
Awesome. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Chair. Thank you to the authority. The purpose of this work session is to provide opportunities for the authority to share its guidance on the future direction of work by the office regarding service provider resilience, reliability and customer service issues. You can see the agenda on the left and our discussion points on the right. So these are the things that we are hoping to derive from these conversations. The office has prepared research and developed options. However, our work is surely not exhaustive, so any thoughts or options that we haven't considered should be on the table for discussion, and when we reach those discussion points, we invite the authority to introduce any thoughts that they may have. Broadly, all service providers experience differing complaint rates from these three business activities: installations, outage resolution and maintenance. The longstanding trope about the cable guy offering a six-hour window for an installation and then being six hours late rings familiar to many of us. For our residents who have been patiently waiting for any fiber service to come their way, it is acutely painful when an installation appointment comes and goes without resolution. Those same residents likely have, as their only broadband option, a digital subscriber line that is built on aging copper infrastructure. Innovative for its ability to fit many times more data through a telephone line than dial-up modems, this technology's experience has remained largely unchanged over the last 30 years. In order to provide DSL service, copper infrastructure must be properly shielded from the elements and well-maintained. Even when telephony remains possible, the higher frequencies used by DSL service can be impacted by degradation in the network. Degradation or damage within the network can cause reliability issues or outages that can be costly to repair. I know that this is all very familiar for those of you that have experienced this degradation. This work session, though, does not seek to malign copper lines. Indeed, copper telephone lines have been vital to rural areas for communication and public safety. Our county's 700-plus square miles are largely rural, full of rolling hills and mountains, which often don't play nicely with cellular signals. Irrespective of broadband penetration, without reliable copper lines in the rural area, many of our residents would be cut off from communication and public safety in their homes. Over the last year, one of the only operators of copper telephone and DSL service in our rural area has been busy expanding the footprint of its fiber-backed broadband service into that rural area. Much of this activity has been spurred on by funds from the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative, projects in which the authority was intimately involved. The new fiber passes are an incredible boon for the community, providing up to 1 gigabits per second broadband service in a region that's used to 1/40th that speed. But the public exposure on these partially government-funded projects, along with database errors, subcontractor negligence and confusion in communication, has yielded a steady stream of complaints from residents attempting to sign up for this promised service. Meanwhile, the continued degradation of its copper infrastructure has left CenturyLink DSL service vulnerable to weather and human error-related outages and reliability issues. There is no doubt that the difficulties faced by many of our residents have been unacceptable for any service provider. Database errors that mislocate a resident and make them ineligible for service, installation appointments canceled without explanation and resulting in months-long delays in service, and on the copper line side, unexplained outages that go unresolved for months along with storm-related outages that stretch on long after electric and/or other utilities have been fully restored. In a few moments, we will ask the authority to give us some guidance on whether and where to take our residents' issues. For now, we would like to share some of the work we've done to get a better hold of these issues, not just for these incidents, but with plans to provide earnest monitoring of broadband service-related issues throughout the county and across all providers. We will also share some of the details of the analysis we've done and some of the mitigation steps we will be considering. We will pause periodically for the authority's thoughts and then intend to leave time at the end for further questions and discussions. The roots of this office go back to Director Culp's prior role as the Director of Information Technology for the county and appointed administrator for this authority. The broadband accessibility and affordability office officially took form in May of this year and developed a mission paralleling that of the county: universal access affordable to residents of all means. I was brought on in a temporary role and recently became the program manager on a full-time basis. Prior to BAO and during the first few months of the office, resident complaints were generally received by email or voicemail, often with messages copied to elected and appointed officials. Director Culp would frequently engage the resident to better understand the circumstances and where necessary, which was often, escalate the issue to the appropriate bodies. As previously mentioned, the majority of the complaints received this year revolve around work and service managed by CenturyLink. Following up on outstanding complaints with representatives from CenturyLink and the resident became a regular part of the director's role. Shortly after I was brought on, full-time Director Culp asked me to develop a workflow for collating and cataloging the emails for further analysis. Some of that is what you're seeing now. Using survey 123 as an input method, a database was prepared that allows the office to review catalogued data. The database features over 150 emails, many of which are repeat escalations for issues that required additional follow-up. And this brings us to our first discussion point. Should we, as the office and the authority, be engaging in these sorts of activities? Monitoring and escalating resident complaints as it specifically relates to activity resulting from a local, state or federally funded initiative? The argument in favor relates to our commitment to responsibly managing finances and ensuring that resident tax dollars are effectively used. A concern, though, is that service providers may be discouraged from participating in future such initiatives in order to avoid the spotlight. And there we will open it up for discussion with the authority.
Yes.
I imagine that there would be a fairly enthusiastic yes on that part, specifically as it relates to that fiscal responsibility. So as an extension of that, sort of building on that same idea, should this municipality, now I'm obviously speaking a little bit more broadly, engage in a similar degree of monitoring for all of our service providers? This is an industry, which we've already noted, in which issues, service issues are the setup and the punchline for jokes, and many of our residents have experienced not terribly dissimilar bad outcomes from lots of other providers. So there are other levels of government that have oversight and authority, including the SEC, DHCD's Office of Broadband and the Federal Communications Commission. However, local knowledge can go a long way to resolving specific issues and mitigating the impacts of those issues. So should the authority, and I'm sorry, should the authority feel it is a justifiable municipal activity? The follow-up is, should this activity be the purview of this office or a consumer advocacy body within the county government?
So I have a question. Are you talking about, are you talking about the Dominion Power and service providers like that?
We're talking, in this case, specifically about telecommunications providers. So going back to this slide, so the database that we've prepared right now, it is entirely built from complaints related to CenturyLink that were forwarded or sent directly to Director Culp. There is, you know, a fair argument that if we're helping some of our residents, let's help all of our residents. And in that case, should we develop some means by which residents can reach out to us about complaints with any of their providers? And we perform that same basic activity of escalating their complaints and then trouble ticket tracking. Part of the argument against is that this should be the job of these service providers. These service providers are, if service providers are not effectively performing this job, then there is an argument to be made that they are underperforming their customers. But I think that there are limits to what exists for others to do. I'll, I see Waldo's hand if.
Yeah, just to your, to your prior slide, Jason, are there any broadband providers of any note in Almar County that haven't received state, local or federal funding?
I don't know that, well, no, I think is the easy answer to that.
Yeah, I think the Venn diagram is just a circle is what I'm saying.
That's, that's fair. Okay, I see what you're saying there. However, the, I guess the limitation that I'll push back on there is that the means that, by which we have to access complaints is people reaching out to us. Right now, the reason that CenturyLink is getting so much attention has a lot more to do with the fact that they are engaged in an advertised project. They're not necessarily, we don't know that they are, they're not necessarily performing worse than other providers, but because Mike's name, our office's name, the county's name is attached to these projects, people are reaching out about them. And so if we open it up to everything.
Question that assertion.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we roll back the clock four years ago and Mike's phone was ringing off the hook with people calling to talk about, you know, things that weren't project-related with the much smaller projects that were going on at that time.
And again, I think that the emphasis we want to make is that we only know what we know that has come through Mike's inbox. So if we're to take a more active role in monitoring the performance of all of our providers, then that, you know, that has to look a certain way. It has to involve a certain amount of outreach. I think Ms. Palmer, your hand was up first. Supervisor Palmer, sorry.
Thank you. I have, I have a variety of questions that pertain to this in, in the who else is doing this range. I mean, CenturyLink is the DSL provider and DSL, as you've explained very, very nicely, is copper lines that are deteriorating and we have the phone issue. So they're in a different category, as far as I'm concerned, than, than a Comcast that's predominantly an urban area. I'm sure they get lots of complaints, but they may not be of the same level as I don't have any service for two weeks. But I'm wondering what, what guidance on this whole regulatory issue? What guidance we're getting from the governor's office? And just a few words about where the FCC is, is it still deadlocked, waiting for that fifth commissioner? Because we would assume that we'll have some help from the FCC when that's, when that's fully staffed or fully with all the commissioners on. And, and is there any interest or has there, has somebody already reached out to Mark Warner's office? And these are all questions that relate to who else is doing this? And are, and then, and can they do a better job than us? So, you know.
I, if, if possible, can we reserve that question for the next discussion? Specifically because, you know, we've got some options on the table and what you mentioned are great ideas for, to expand on what we've, we've considered to relate specifically to the CenturyLink question. Right now, we just want to know, like, does, does the authority think it's appropriate for us to start doing some of this monitoring for all of the providers in our area? I believe Supervisor Price was next.
Um, thank you. A couple of things. While I can't speak for further past, only going back the last 21-plus months, the, what we've experienced with the copper DSL lines through CenturyLink, I would say is substantially greater in terms of volume and length of time than at least what I'm aware of with any other broadband provider in the county. Having said that, I think anytime we reach a level where there is a reasonable argument that it is affecting public health or safety, and that's the situation here with, in terms of connectivity and communication, then I think the county should step in. How far the county steps in will depend upon what this particular circumstances of that situation happen to be and how far they're going. Today, the county was dealing with a public health issue at an apartment complex where trash was not being picked up. Do we get need to monitor every trash hauler? No. But when it reaches a public health issue, then I think the county has an obligation to step in to do what we reasonably can. And I think that is, differentiates what we've been dealing with in the southern part of the county in particular with regard to this one provider, which is different from the others. So the answer to the question is, yes, when it reaches this sort of a level, then I think the county needs to. No, I don't think the county needs to, just because there are some customers who happen to be having a complaint with a provider. It has to reach a sort of a threshold level. Thank you.
So to reflect and make sure that I've got that, so your suggestion is not necessarily that we engage in a full-throated effort to catalog complaints from all of our providers and do the sort of analysis that we've done for this particular batch of complaints, but perhaps that we maintain some basic monitorings that way when there is a specific issue that comes up that is more widespread and particularly where it relates to public safety. We're in a position to step in and try to, you know, have procedures in place to try to affect a positive outcome.
Thank you, Mr. Ina Fuentes. That's.
Okay, perfect. I believe Mr. Henry?
Thanks, Jason, and I think Supervisor Price stole most of my thunder on that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna concur with, with her and I do feel like that this effort is worthy when it's at a threshold and level that is appropriate. You know, and it is, and I look at it as a, as an outage and an outage that may have a certain duration. It's not a, you know, I don't think the broadband office was envisioned to be tracking every customer complaint on somebody was three hours past my scheduled service time. That, that's not the highest and best use of this program. Reminding, you know, we have affordability and accessibility and we have other core missions that need to get done. So, you know, I think that should be the focus of, of the office along with the management of our VADI work, which is, which is trying to get us to universal coverage. The sooner we get to that point and the sooner that we have broad competition, I think customer service issues are going to start taking care of themselves. But until then, you know, I do agree that when there is a systemic outage that is, you know, and getting involved with Emergency Communication Center and other, other entities to help bring resources to bear and to put pressure on the provider, that makes sense to me, but it's got to be at a threshold. I don't, I don't know what that is, you know, that would need to be defined. But, but it's not tracking every single one-off complaint that, that anyone might have on a provider, in my opinion.
That makes sense. I appreciate that. And the, to, to just touch on that briefly, Mike and I actually had a meeting with ECC and Chief Oprandy earlier today to touch on and begin the discussion specifically along those lines. Waldo, is your hand still up?
No, I just didn't get to the second half of my.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, it's, it's fine. It was unrelated, so it's probably, probably for the best. Make sure everybody can say something. I just wanted to add that all procurements in government need some sort of a quality assurance surveillance plan. You need some way to know that the work that's being done meets the, some sort of prescribed standards. And there's an unfortunate practice that happens in government in which vendors are allowed to, the acronym for this is a QASP or Quality Assurance Surveillance Plan. There's an unfortunate habit when procuring services of allowing vendors to provide their own QASP, which is like allowing restaurants to define for themselves what health standards they're going to meet and then measure on their own if they meet those standards. It's a terrible approach. So it is perfectly appropriate and consistent for us to say, we're going to provide grants in order to build out broadband, but we're going to provide a QASP as to what the acceptable level of quality is. And so far, the federal government has abdicated, not surprisingly, its responsibility such that they handed out lots of money through prior grant regimes to add broadband, DSL in particular, at locations where you can no longer get that broadband service there. Despite receiving a specific grant in a reverse auction, in order to cover that address, it's not covered anymore. And that, that's a terrible approach. And I think it's important for us, for handing out money, not to just measure it by, did they say that address, that service is available at that address? But is it actually available? And not it's available now, but is it available going forward? There's no expiration date on their obligation to provide coverage to these addresses.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I, and I think that that is in large part, part of the motivation behind this sort of tracking is that we recognize that access isn't access if it takes three months and the website never lets you actually sign up for service. So thank you for that. Mr. Fritz?
Like Trevor said, everybody else has stolen my thunder, but so you have consensus. I agree with what everybody else has said. I have nothing to add, but I completely agree with what's been said.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate this discussion. So to summarize, it sounds like we are landing on a place where broadband will, when we are talking about outlays, particularly of county or state funds, do a certain level of direct monitoring of those projects, making sure that they're actually delivering on what we are hoping that they are going to deliver. But more broadly, we're going to maintain a certain level of monitoring that allows us to catch outages, especially where they affect public safety. And I think that that's something that everybody is on a consensus for, so we will move forward. So our initial analysis of these 150 emails demonstrated what you see here. So from May of 2021 to today, there were 100 emails related to 58 households with installation issues. Of those, 29 involved issues related to signup, 2 involved contractor damaging property, 22 involved canceled service appointments. Regarding outages, 55 emails associated with outages from reports by 38 households of at least, and of those, at least 12 involved canceled service appointments. Maintenance and reliability issues, 19 emails associated with reliability issues from 13 households. Of those, at least four involved canceled service appointments. And across all categories, 59 involved repeat escalations, and many have still not resulted in a complete resolution. I'm sure many of you are aware, we still have outage issues in Scottsville. We still have outage issues in some of, some of the VADI areas. And those are things that we are continuing to collaborate with CenturyLink to figure out what, what needs to happen to reach an equitable resolution. When we explore the emails, we see a myriad of fail points. New fiber passes require many steps. The most visible are the trenching, running fiber along the road and running fiber to the home and installing the equipment in the home. And we found fail points at each of those steps. The subcontractors trenching conduit along the road or preparing new utility poles to hang fiber would make location and regulatory errors that required the work to be repeated, often resulting in unnecessary damage to private property. Fiber crews that were running fiber along the road or to someone's home were doing so on a seemingly arbitrary basis that led to confusion for residents. And possibly most frustrating, installation appointments could, would be made and canceled repeatedly. Consulting with CenturyLink staff, we learned that the database error, that database errors allowed some users to schedule appointments despite service not being ready for their address. Similarly, it prevented some residents from enrolling for service despite having fiber already strung to their home. Subcontractor mistakes caused delays and other challenges, including outages that persist, and that also resulted in planned service appointments being canceled. During the same period, weather and human error outages affected both the DSL and fiber services. And it remains unclear why some customers remain without service, but it seems likely that part of the issue is a lack of necessary investment in the copper infrastructure to maintain adequate service. All of that led to an inability on CenturyLink's part to provide adequate customer service communication, even for residents whose issues had been escalated through channels. Their promises have been made both personally to Director Culp and publicly before elected officials and the community, there remains an interest in escalating CenturyLink's underperformance. And I want to emphasize that, though, to a certain extent, we are picking on CenturyLink's performance here. They have been responsive when pressed. In this instance, Derek Kelly from CenturyLink provided details about contractors and their inability to adequately resolve a storm-related outage due to lack of material. And another, another representative of CenturyLink discusses the, a similar difficulty in finding the right equipment to, the right materials to resolve an outage after a third party caused damage to to fiber that was improperly left out. After numerous discussions with Director Culp and Supervisor Price, CenturyLink's regional operations manager Trish, Trish Stepanovich offered explanations regarding the resolution of customer service issues related to signups. That would be the database errors and offered a promise that the numerous service issues would not continue at pace. She also offered the following after attending a Scottsville Town Council meeting. It was great to meet you both this week. As I stated, Lumen is committed to restoring services and working to isolate those customers. It was great to meet you both this week. As I stated, Lumen is committed to restoring services and working to isolate those customers that have been continuing to express frustration at their service. That was a few weeks ago, and many of those outages persist today. In a moment, I will ask the authority its thoughts on whether and how we should respond to these issues. First, let me lay out some of the ideas and options. We could do nothing more than follow through on the white paper that we might have time to discuss this evening as well, and to continue the work to serve our citizens by improving our collaboration with our service providers. We have already discussed these efforts to some degree. Another element that is up for discussion is the preparation of an after-action report on the Body 2020 project that can be used to inform the process for Body 2021, which is already underway, and Body 2022, which is pending. Taking this approach would entail setting aside any efforts to escalate this issue further, but would still involve the office and the authority in improving the performance of service providers in our area to resolve these issues for our resident. Another option is to do the same as the last, but to offer at the beginning of the escalation process that if the resident at any time finds the response of a provider unsatisfying, they can file a complaint with the SCC or the FCC. Following along that theme, Albemarle County could act either through the office, the authority, or another body and file an informal complaint to the SCC or FCC. Under FCC guidelines, the Consumer and Governmental Affairs Bureau of the Commission receives disputes against carriers. Informal complaints once filed are sent to the defendant carrier, which has 30 days to respond. Once the response has been submitted and during the 30-day window, the commission recommends parties privately discuss a settlement, including under FCC mediation. Six months after the response has been received, if the complainant is dissatisfied with the defendant's response, then the informal complaint is converted into a formal complaint. Filing an informal complaint would likely involve a small work group determining the specific violations and the relief sought. The SCC only addresses copper line telephony. And so a complaint to them by the county would be limited in nature, but for affected parties, we could make a recommendation that one be filed where appropriate. Other options include drafting a notification to DHCD regarding our concerns about CenturyLink's ability to meet Body 2021 requirements during the transition of the company's assets in Virginia to Apollo. Coordinating with other counties impacted by CenturyLink underperformance at next month's Baco conference, a coalition may be able to compel a beneficial response from CenturyLink and private mediation with CenturyLink to resolve the remaining Body 2020 issues, the numerous outages that occurred and persist this year, and to ensure adequate performance during the Body 2021 process. To open our discussion, here's a slide listing the options I just mentioned. And obviously to include Supervisor Palmer's recommendations about reaching out to other elected officials, for instance, Senator Warner and other options along those lines. Waldo, your hand's been up for a little while, so I will go to you.
I'm sorry, I just never lowered it. My apologies.
It's okay. No worries. And so we open this one up for discussion with you all. Ms. Palmer. Supervisor Palmer, I'm sorry.
You're muted.
Supervisor, I believe you're muted.
Oh, there, I'm sorry. If you escalated to the FCC in the FCC's present situation, is that valuable? And that's why I asked the question about, are we still, you know, missing a person on the FCC and and what's your opinion? Do you guys have an opinion on the value of that?
So the, an informal complaint to the FCC would, is the lowest, has the lowest barrier to entry. So it's the lowest lift, honestly, for Richie over there. The complaint can be in the form of a letter that lists the specific violations and it would also list the specific relief sought. So we would have to have some idea of what it is that we want them to do to resolve these matters. And then the way that the informal complaint is structured is it just places a sort of Damocles over CenturyLink that we would escalate it to a formal complaint and just compels them to come to the table to have frank discussions about ways that they can resolve this matter. The actual build of the commission doesn't really play into this because there isn't any difference one way or another, whether they're four member or five member. However, if after six months we are dissatisfied, then it would become a formal complaint and that would be a more full administrative process. So that involves actually preparing a full packet with specific attestations about each violation that is, that is brought. So in a, in a real way, the informal complaint would serve as leverage to bring CenturyLink to a more frank mediation discussion.
Well, as far as, I like the coalition of the counties. I like private mediation with CenturyLink. I do think that we should be notifying DHCD about the Vatty concerns. I'm concerned on the FCC issue if it's going to do any value as long as CenturyLink is, for instance, not compelled to do anything about the copper lines. And that's why I wanted to know if they have solved their, if anybody's been appointed. Because I assume that until somebody's appointed, that 2017 law that you talk about in your white paper will not get reversed.
And that is, that is definitely something that we are, we're watching. It will be, it won't be until there's a full commission before any changes would be seen there. And those changes could be quick because it is effectively a decision by the chair to lower those standards. And so I think that that's something that we can, we can be hopeful for. The other challenge there is, it is the copper infrastructure itself that is part of the sale. And so it wouldn't even be CenturyLink that we would be dealing with by the time we would have a full commission. It would actually be whatever new entity is formed to manage and operate those lines.
That's a good point. And I guess I would still want to I just don't know that, and I don't know anything about the FCC and others may have a much better idea than I do, but it just seems like it's kind of a waste of time if there's not a you know, if they're not legally compelled to do something about, at least about the copper lines. I mean, we have different, we have different problems here. When we talk about health and safety in the rural areas, the copper lines are one of the things that is, is most is a huge safety concern right now, presently. So I'll stop now.
Chair Walsh, I believe, had his hands up. And Chair Walsh, you're muted.
So that's Bucky to his friends. First off, as a matter of principle, I think you want to provide to citizens who have a concern or a complaint all of the tools that are necessary for them to be able to raise that complaint themselves. When there is a matter of public health or public safety, so there is a broad, you know, swath of people who are not being taken care of properly or a situation has gone on for a long enough period of time, then I think it might well fall within the remit of your office to escalate that up the appropriate channel as well.
So that is a yay on escalation. Is that a yay on escalation directly to the FCC?
It's a yay on escalation, but it's a yay on escalation after the citizens have been encouraged to take the lead on that. You don't want to be, you don't want to be the first stop everyone makes as opposed to calling the vendor, as opposed to calling the vendor a second time. You want to be where they come after that has failed, because as was earlier pointed out, you don't want to be in the providing service business for all the different vendors. You don't want to be the ombudsman for all kinds of problems. You want to be the place where you go when the problems aren't getting solved.
Yes, and there I will Sorry, I lost my train of thought there.
Anyway, to answer your question to the FCC, I would escalate as high as was practicable.
Supervisor Price?
Thank you, and I agree with what Supervisor Palmer and Chair Walsh have said. We don't want to be the customer service desk for every complaint that's out there. And I think the broadband office can establish some sort of a guideline, not necessarily a fine line, but a guideline on the scenarios that would have the broadband office get involved. Not every single time someone has an appointment canceled or loses service, do we need to involve? I'm not, and I apologize, someone called me as a couple of the slides were up. I'm not quite sure what the do not escalate was, because currently I know we do escalate. I see, you know, Mr. Culp's emails go out asking Trish to escalate this up or whatever may need to be done. But I would say that what we've been doing right now is probably the way to continue doing it. And I'll say this somewhat facetiously, somewhat seriously, and somewhat in line with what Supervisor Palmer was saying. Does a complaint to the FCC survive the death of the complainant? Because I mean, I have a sense that that's going to take a really long time to get any action on it. And we're probably better off continuing to work as to the greatest extent we can with the provider to get this resolved rather than moving up beyond what we at the county can do just through the good networking and efforts that have been made. Yet at the same time, wanting to ensure that providers understand that we would not be opposed in the right situation of going up, you know, beyond the county and the corporate level. Thank you.
To expand on that, yes. A formal complaint process, including the seven months of the informal complaint is on about a two and a half year timeline. So it is not a quick resolution. And that is why the FCC has included this informal complaint period where their goal is to just get all parties to the table under mediation. So I definitely recognize that the challenge of a long timeline is, it doesn't help us. Mr. Jakes?
I just like to make the point that like, we don't actually have to know what the right thing to do is. Like, it seems good and right to experiment. Say like, well, let's try this thing for a little bit and see how it goes. Are people frustrated if we tell them to do this? Is this a waste of time? I just, I think it's wise to try different things to see what happens. An adjacent point that I want to make is that we, as a county, have resources like this office that many other counties do not, particularly the counties that surround us, the counties that are going into this, this new project with us. And I think it's good for us to use those resources to experiment, to identify new best practices and document them. And something that I imagine many of us are thinking about all of this really is like, isn't anybody doing this? Why do we have to do this? And there's something that we, we often say in, in, in federal technology, which is there is nobody coming, there is only us. There's often the feeling like, well, surely somebody else will deal with this. Nope, nope, that's us. We're the somebody else who's going to deal with this. And if you think like, well, this is really frustrating, there should be a national system. I agree. But it's got to start somewhere. And for us to experiment and try new things and share and tell others, and maybe it grows, maybe the state takes it over. Maybe the federal government takes it or who knows? But I love that we're in a position to try these things out. And if it doesn't work, if we go down the wrong path, that's fine. We got, we got smart folks running this office and working there who can go back down that, that wrong direction and try something different. But I, as a board member, have no interest in tying your hands as to which of these paths are pursued. I'm much more interested in knowing that we can give you the space to experiment and find what does work.
Okay, so finding no consensus. So to just go back to this list, it sounds like there is there is a desire to actually empower our residents to make their decisions when it comes to individual FCC complaints. And that is something we are currently working on our website, a landing page for all these broadband issues. And I think that some language on how to file an FCC complaint is appropriate there. Thankfully, both the SCC and FCC both have FAQs that actually are well-written and pretty valuable for this sort of thing. And so referring residents to that will probably be ideal. It sounds like there isn't a whole lot of interest in necessarily chasing the informal complaint. In part because it sounds like mediation might be something that is of interest. Working with the supervisors and Baco to develop a coalition as well as reaching out to DHCD about our specific concerns, all seem to be landing pretty squarely in the affirmative. Anybody want to?
I agree with your summary, I think. At least I do. That sounds reasonable for now. And if it turns out later on that the FCC informal complaint is the way we go, then you start going down that as Waldo has suggested.
I did just note that Rohit Chopra was just named like a couple hours ago as the head of the Federal Trade, Federal Trade Commission. Super smart guy. He has very strong feelings about this matter. Whatever jurisdiction FTC can carve out for itself on this matter, they're gonna. So it is entirely possible that we see things change on a federal level. And if we can skate to where that puck will be, so much the better.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
And like Waldo said, you know, we have resources and I think that's great. I am a big fan of trying to get other localities in Virginia to come together and try to figure this out. If it's a high-growth coalition, that's Baco. There are other people who are in the exact same boat we are. And yeah, we might be the ones that invent the new way. We've done that. Albemarle County has invented things before that have been picked up by other people. It's a lot of work, but it's, it feels good when you do it, so.
And we have David Blunt already very engaged in this subject. And he would be valuable to reach out and talk about the Baco. And Anne Malik is our, is the Board Baco representative. I know other board members will go to the Baco meeting, but she's our liaison. Official liaison, just an FYI.
Excellent. So I think that that gives Mike and I a lot to follow up on. I think that one of the things that we're going to probably try to tackle quickly is going to be the DHCD element as well as reaching out to Supervisor Malik and any other supervisors that are going to Baco to provide briefings and answer any questions related to discussions that you might have with at Baco. I know that Director Culp has already spoken with staff in Patrick County as well as Green County about similar issues. And it's likely that there are going to be more, more counties that are going to be interested in participating in something like this. Given that we have a fairly limited amount of time, and I want to offer just some opportunities to for any broader questions about our office and our goals. I'm just going to move quickly through the slides related to the white paper. Everybody has the current draft. We would love feedback on that draft whenever you have it, but our our goals travel around along two lines, mitigation and resilience. The mitigation side is kind of the easier to explain because it's where we take new resources or existing resources and try to deploy them to give people affected by an outage someplace to be able to connect and get broadband on a temporary basis, hopefully. Temporary brief because outages get resolved quickly. Those things we're working with, we're going to be working to do an evaluation and figure out what would be appropriate sites for those sorts of things and see what sorts of equipment and needs we would have to procure in order to make that a reality. The resilient side is a little bit more challenging. And if you've read the white paper, I think that we did a pretty good job of expanding on the different challenges, but broadly, the three approaches there are going to be competition. So this is actually affecting policies that create new opportunities for competition in any area where there is one provider at present. And that's not just the rural area. That's also many of our multifamily units where against FCC regulations, kind of, they carve out exclusions that allow one provider to cover an entire unit and lock out anybody else. The other things that we were thinking of would be infrastructure upgrades. And this in particular is actually just an opportunistic approach where we look at occasions when we're going to be upgrading road infrastructure and we opportunistically look at putting resources into that space. So one option that hasn't been tried anywhere, but we'd be willing to consider it or at least have discussions about considering it is open access conduit. So right now, one of the largest expenses and challenges behind laying fiber is that you have to trench miles and miles of conduit. Coordinating with, for instance, VDOT. Coordinating with, for instance, VDOT, whenever a road undergoes a major excavation before the, the riprap and the tar gets laid back down, we could talk, we could coordinate and talk to them about laying down conduit. And even if we don't have any use for that conduit right now, as other ISPs develop and grow their networks. Any ISP that knows that, hey, we already have conduit under this road. They're going to take advantage of the opportunity. The distinction here is that we want to make sure that that conduit is open access. Anybody that wants to access it to run fiber to serve our customers and our residents would be welcome to do so. That's a somewhat more pie in the sky idea, but something that we'd be interested in pursuing. And then cellular improvements, there are a lot of barriers to improving cellular networks in the county. But that is the best option for providing a backup solution for when there is a wireline outage. Short of having multiple wireline competitors in each space. So like I said, you guys have the draft of the white paper. We're going to continue to work and expand on that and any notes or comments would be really, really appreciated. I'm going to now just hand it back to Mike for any other final comments before we go back to Bucky to close this.
Thanks, Jason. Great job going through all that. I've got a, a lot of notes on here. Very good work. Thank you for, for putting that together and facilitating. And I appreciate the input from the broadband authority and look forward to following up on all of these issues. And we'll turn it over to the chair for questions or further discussion. So thanks again, everybody.
Anybody have anything else they, they need to say yet, Donna? You're still muted.
Sorry about, somehow that part of my screen got covered and I couldn't find the unmute button. I would, I would ask if it's possible to take a message from this. Chair Walsh, Mr. Culp, and see if Kate might be able to get a message out on this. To, I think it'd be very helpful for our residents to know that our offices, the broadband office is continuing to work on this. I'm still seeing communications coming from the southern part of the county. And they really, they want to know that we are doing something and we are. So if I could do that, I, I think that'd be really helpful.
You can't get credit for things you don't tell people about. Any other comments or thoughts?
Yeah, Chair Walsh, just, I guess riffing on that, I'm supportive, but I, we gotta be real careful in what that messaging is so that we are not the first in line of, you know, call one eight hundred broadband office for every, you know, glitch that you have on your, in your connection. So, so yes, but we, we should, we can do that in a way that, that is appropriate. I just, I wanted to just, Jason, you were kind of new to, you know, welcome aboard in, in a, in a permanent position. I think, I think based on today, you know, we're all very excited about you being part of the, the broadband team in a more permanent way. Really good job presenting and, and, and shout out to you and Mike for, for the prep and getting, you know, getting us to, to, to a work session. I think you have some good actionable feedback. I'm really interested in, in the work that you're doing with the Emergency Communication Center around, you know, that, there's, when we have those outages that, that are going to be for days or in the weeks. You know, if there can be some coordinated assets that can help alleviate the, the situation for those residents experiencing the outages. So I know I'll be working with you just because I'm across the office from you, but that, I think that that's something that the authority would have interest in as that work progresses on what, you know, what a future long-term outage might result in with a ECC response. And maybe even being able to draw down some state resources on it from, from a public safety perspective. Thanks.
I appreciate the compliment and my background is in planning. And so it's right there in the name. All of this is about planning for the eventualities. So that way you're not caught off guard and you're able to act. So I think that's definitely something we want to, we want to get ahead on.
Trevor was a good point about the messaging and, and I'm sure anything that went out would have Mike's cellphone number as the sole point of contact for issues.
I just have one really quick comment. Jason, I think you did a wonderful job with all your recaps and kind of pulling everything together. I just wanted to mention on your recap of going to Baco. I just wanted to make sure that you included David Blunt on that. Okay. And that's it, but it was a very, very well organized. Thank you to you and Mike.
I don't see any more hands. Anything else? Then is there a motion to adjourn? I see one from Supervisor Price. I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting stands adjourned now that we're not meeting anymore. Or mind you, we have an actual planned meeting in a couple of weeks. So please don't forget, your October meeting is not done. And I'll see you all again real soon.
Thanks, y'all.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you. I'll be thinking about y'all.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.